Polk City Council Meeting, this is Tuesday, February 20th, 6:30 PM. If you have your cellphone turned on, pager turned on, would you please silence that? Madam Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Protem Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here.
Do we have Catalina in the audience? Okay, please rise for the invocation. We'll have this shortened, we'll mainly do a moment of silence for the, again, the school tragedy that took place this past week, so just remember the families and the victims of that tragedy, and try to pray for some wisdom that we can somehow find a way to prevent this in the future. Now, please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, presentations elsewhere. On February 10th, I presented a proclamation honoring One Billion Rising. It's in, to end violence against women and children. And then also, on the 17th, I provided a writ of proclamation to the Lompoc Filipino-American Club on their 50th anniversary. If you haven't had an opportunity to drive by the newest mural, the Lompoc Filipino-American Club, they did a beautiful mural. It's on the, I guess, the south side of the Ruskowski Building, right along the little Pocket Park there, is a very, very nice mural. All of our city murals are beautiful, but this one is nice. And they'll be donating that mural to the city. So if you have an opportunity to drive by and take a look at that. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, just wanted to share with you that we are on track to roll out our commercial cannabis business application process on March 1st, and are looking to have a workshop for applicants on Monday, March 5th. We'll be sending out an update through the Public Information Officer's office, press release, and put it on the website, so encourage folks to stay tuned for the details of the location and time for that workshop, and confirmation exactly when the applications will be available. But it does look like we should be able to make that timeline. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Public comment on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of things that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion unless an item, Councilmember wishes to pull an item. Councilmember Osborne.
I don't wish to pull an item. I just need to mention a correction on the minutes for September 5th, item nine under action. The no votes stated as Lingle and Mosby, it should be the no votes stated as Lingle and Osborne.
Okay. So noted. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, there's some other corrections in that same paragraph, because it says in there that we had, with additional direction to delete the funding for crossing guards, park maintenance directions, transfers, what we did is we deleted taking those out, so it's kind of the opposite of what it states there.
Okay.
Well, it says with additional direction to delete the Lompoc Unified School crossing guard fund, and from the deletions. So is it double deletion, is that what you're saying? Delete from the deletions list.
Okay. Means put them back in.
Double negative makes a positive.
There you go.
All right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, just for Council or City Clerk, if you can make note, on item number three, I will be voting no on that, on item number three. So with that, the correction, could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, going on to staff presentation. City Manager.
This is actually a council request to come back within 90 days from the action that council took on December 5th, when council directed staff to terminate the MOU with the Motorsports Park Committee. And that direction on that date was also to commence negotiations on a new MOU if a new proposal came forward from the committee. And as I mentioned, to bring back to all of you an update within 90 days. So, share with you some of the correspondence and a couple of meetings that we've had with the committee since then. So council took that action on December 5th, and on December 7th, we received a public records request from the Chair of the Committee for emails and documents that were related to the Motorsports Park project. And currently, we, staff is still working on reviewing more than 30,000 emails in order to fulfill that public records request. So that is one item. On December 8th, we sent the letter to the Committee terminating the MOU per the agreement. And on January 5th, the Committee returned, we, the city returned to the Committee the unused fund balances $7,656.09 that was on deposit that was not used for the project. So the funds that belong to the foundation will return to them. On January 24th, the foundation returned that check indicating that it would not accept the funds without an accounting of expenses attached. On January 31st, staff returned the check to the foundation with the requested expense report. This one's a little smaller, sorry about that. But we did have a couple of meetings as well. On January 19th, the Foundation Chair requested that, a meeting, and he and I met, and he shared the concerns he has with the termination of the MOU, that it was not handled correctly, and that the information provided to council in the December 5th staff report was based on lies, not accurate information, is what was alleged. Also, the Chair also shared concerns that they would like the MOU reinstated for those reasons, and if that cannot be done, then to create a new MOU that would be the same or nearly the same as the last one. Other concerns discussed was, the Chair feels the landing area, and the Committee feels the landing area is not defined for skydive, and therefore, they cannot provide a new project proposal, because it has not been, that area, they say, has not been defined, and I'll give an update on that in a little bit. Also, the Chair requested that staff ask the FAA about whether or not the mitigation area can be used in skydive's landing area. And the foundation does have a former FAA employee onboard as a consultant and an attorney to assist them in answering some of these questions, if staff is not moving forward with assistance there. And I shared with Chairman Lynn that we would be providing an update to you as directed by council, and I would share these concerns with the council at this time. Following that, on February 7th, the Chair of the Foundation requested a meeting with the City Attorney, and I attended that as well. And they reiterated, the foundation reiterated their concerns as stated above and in the previous meeting, and also indicated if we weren't able to assist, as the Chair suggested in the path moving forward, that the Committee would likely engage their attorney and former FAA consultant, FAA employee consultant, to handle the matters. And we shared with the Chair that, you know, the direction we've been given is to work on a new MOU, and we have a new proposal, and that, you know, we really aren't enabled unless council directs us to act on it any further beyond that. So suggested that the group could come to council and ask for it to amend its direction. We also suggested that we would be providing this update, and that would provide an opportunity to council to give any additional input. Back to the map, we did discuss that there was a map that defined the landing area, and I went ahead and sent that back to the Chairman. I think it had been already circulated previously, but we just went ahead and resent it, so that is available. And then yesterday, I received an email from Chairman Lynn, just letting me know that the Committee is working on a draft of an amended MOU, which they do plan to submit to the city by March 5th, and that the Motorsports Park Committee and the Foundation Board have indeed approved funding, additional funds for an attorney's fees to help obtain the information that they need regarding the FAA questions they have in order to complete their draft MOU. So that is where we are, and what has been going on, and the updates we have for you today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Galvain? Councilmember Vega.
Teresa, there was a question before that was proposed to me that said that the map for the landing area had never been certified. Was that ever an issue, or is that some hearsay? Does that map need to be certified, or somehow? Now that you say there is a map that shows the landing area, in what format is that? Is that something that was able to be used?
This is a map that staff went out with Skydive, and they looked at the area and talked about the area that they are using, and actually mapped it out, and also subsequently, the City Manager went out with the Foundation Chair, and they went out and did the same. And there were three different versions kind of defining that area. So it's a practical use area. I don't know about a certification, but it is practically what is being used.
I guess, with the city being the landlord, is that map movable, or is that something you're going to consider as their legal area as far as between the landlord-tenant? How would the city look at that as far as them being the landlord?
Well, our current landlord-tenant arrangement is, we have a letter that defines that they're able to use this area, and that is the area that they've been using. So it's very broad, and that is our current arrangement.
So there's not a number on this map that says this is it, and this is what we acknowledge between the city as far as a landlord-tenant agreement? It's kind of, there's three choices, and you just pick one, and then we can revert to map two or three at any time? Or, I guess it's a valid question to see how you guys look at it in the City Attorney.
Sure, and I would say that the map is not attached to the landlord-tenant letter agreement. So maybe that clarifies that that is not an attachment to any binding document.
Is that an issue moving forward as far as the city's concerned?
I think the concern that maybe the foundation has shared is that there, if they're going to bring forward a new proposal, you know, they want to make sure that they're working with the proper information, and that is the most current scenario we have. And the FAA has shared that the aeronautical use cannot be displaced by a non-aeronautical use, which is really where determining how to propose a new project, the Committee will have to, you know, get some of their questions answered, and as they indicated in their email yesterday to me, that they have hired some consultants, some attorney, to help them answer those questions.
On, as far as Skydive's concerned, it's an important question that I just asked, but on the other end, should this project move forward and they get a new MOU approved, they would have to have some sort of a security issue to their, the area that they're going to develop? Is that not true, as far as for them to obtain funding and moving forward? You know, all of a sudden, if you build something and then the map changes for Skydive, is that ever going to be an issue?
In order to successfully proceed, it would definitely need to be clear where the new proposed project would be in relation to a landing area.
To be fair to both parties, you wouldn't want to say, hey, you have a covenant that says it's incompatible with FAA use, and all of a sudden, that area is expanded and then infringes on another project that could be next door. The reason my question's being asked, so.
Right.
It's kind of open-ended. We don't have an answer for that, but it seems like when you're going to box everybody in and put them on a piece of property, and this is your envelope, you'd like to know the envelope should be clarified, probably, but, okay. Sounds like it's open-ended still, but thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Ms. Galvain, a couple of things here. One of them is, obviously, this landing area is not part of the airport master plan, then. If it was, I'm going to assume that it wouldn't be an issue that we're discussing. So this is some kind of a fictitious landing area still, because it is not a part of the master plan. The other question, I guess, here is, since we've gone down the path here with motorsports, et cetera, we have determined that there is value on this property. There was going to be rent charged to the nonprofit to use this property if the development of the motorsports has occurred. What I'm curious is, now that we've established a value on this property, if the enterprise fund, the airport, is collecting rent on its current use now, because it hadn't before?
So, two questions. One, the master plan, I'd need to look into that and get back to you on that. And then the other is, you're asking, what is the rent value of that area?
Well, we know the rent value. That's been determined. That was what was going to be charged to the.
The motorsports.
Well, to the Park Foundation. Well, we have somebody now subordinate that's using it that wasn't paying rent. Well, now that we've established a value on it, it would seem as though we would want to go ahead and receive rent for the use of this property. Otherwise, it's basically a gift of enterprise in public funds at that point, even though it's not public, because it is an enterprise fund.
We can revisit the agreement that we have with the tenant. They do pay rent.
For a hang.
However, we could revisit it.
But not a landing area. So, I mean, it's something that we may want to look into, because we're raising hanger rates, and we're doing everything else that we can down there to come up with our matching money for FAA grants, but we're, on the other hand, have a whole 40 acres that's not being charged anything, and it's a free-for-all now. So, I mean, there's two sides on this one.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that can come before this council.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I have concerns about what transpired at the February 6th council meeting. It was stated the new financial system does not identify from which fund payments are made. I recommend change, identify which funds satisfy payments. It is a protection against bad practices and would improve transparency. In addition, please put the city checkbook online. If, for example, one department incurred over $1 million in overtime costs, citizens would be made aware. Second concern, safety leadership personnel advised when citizens are threatened by another brandishing a deadly weapon covered under California Penal Code 417, they should make a citizen's arrest. He added, the police would discuss it privately, not in an open forum. What was that about? Vulnerable people can and are often used as political enforcers. Homeless and illegal immigrants fall into this category. The real showstopper was when safety leadership stated he advised grocery stores to ban a specific, dirty, homeless woman from their stores. He made no mention of attempts to assist her or refer her to an agency for help. This safety leadership personnel will develop a plan to sweep the riverbed of citizens and personally determine which citizens are the untouchables among us. These untouchables to be excluded from participating in our community. What criteria was employed to determine one homeless woman was too dirty? Was she non-compliant, a dissenter, a critic, or merely served as an example to others? Government laws, rules, regulations, and ordinances combined with schools abdicating their responsibility to teach reading and math have created the explosive increase in poverty and homelessness. Government created chaos. Chaos is an integral component of socialism. As we become desensitized to the sweeping and banning of fellow citizens, citizens, because illegal immigrants are a protected class. Remember, these tactics of national socialism evolved into a horror 80 years ago as unaffected citizens stood by. It may start with the homeless and dirty, but it will not stop there. A dirty homeless woman poses far less a threat to the community than a dirty cop.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, thank you very much. I would have been here the last meeting to speak with the, about the riverbed issue. But my car was stolen right before I came here and driven into the riverbed by one of the people in the homeless camp. Even to explain the difficulty of getting it out of there, being threatened by the people, we couldn't get the tow truck down there because they were threatened, and we had six police cars there trying to get it out. Right before I got here was the fourth fire across from my house, the fourth fire in, you know, if you saw, the bridge was closed there. It's the fourth fire now. So this is just what's transpired in the last couple of weeks. I live on the river, the big yellow house by the bridge there. I had a man trying to come through my door at 1:00 in the morning, homeless man trying to bust through my door, break through my window. I called the sheriff, and I asked the sheriff, what can I do about it? And she, I said, you know, if he comes through the door, I have two little kids, can I shoot him? And the lady said, are you drunk? She said, you've been drinking. And I said, look, I'll film this guy right now. He's coming in the door, it's going to happen here any minute. I have, I have two little kids, I'm protecting them. And she said, try to hide somewhere. That's just not going to cut it. In the last two weeks, I've had three people on my land trying to get them off. The population has tripled since the last meeting, tripled. They're bringing in building supplies down there. We're not talking about just cardboard boxes, things like that. We're talking about full-on supplies from Home Depot, concrete, big poles, I mean, houses going in down there. If the issue isn't solved soon, and I know it's a difficult issue, I understand that, but if it's not solved soon, you're just going to have a war on your hands here in a year. You're going to go from 60 to 200 to 500 to 1,000. And I know it's difficult, but where the people go, but coming on my land, it's not safe, it's not safe for my family anymore, they're trying to get into my house. My car was stolen last week. I mean, I have a list, I could go on, I couldn't. My kids can't walk on my property anymore, it's too dangerous coming up. I saw they were building on my land as I drove over the bridge, I saw new tarps and tents on my property. I can't go down there and get them off because it's too dangerous to do. People give this excuse to me, well, just call the sheriff. I could call the sheriff every night, every day. It would be a non-stop phone call. They're so loud at night down there, the screaming and yelling, the shooting of guns, it's a non-stop issue. And mine's a different perspective because I live right on it. I mean, but just to give you an example, I couldn't make it to the last meeting because my car was down in the river stolen. So it's exponentially growing, though. If you see, they're parking now on the top of the river. So they're parking now and driving down there and living in the river there. It's a whole new group of people coming. They're young people, is the most I can tell you. Anyways, that's from my angle of it.
Good evening again. John Lynn Lompoc, resident. Thank you, Mayor, for sharing with the community, and let me share again that the construction of the Fallen Warriors Memorial at Beatty Park has begun. Ground was not broken, but moved yesterday, and that is moving forward. If anyone in the community would like to have a brick there, or a plaque, I guess we're using plaques now, to remember someone in the military, that is certainly available, and we encourage everyone to do that. Those contributions are helping to build the facility. I think we have $125,000 raised for this project. It may not be quite enough, so we are looking for a little more money along the way as we build the project. It will, and you've all seen it, so it is a truly amazing project. What I actually came to talk to you about, and thank you for bringing that up, Mayor, was, I know all of you have received the comprehensive annual financial report of the city. I haven't gotten all the way through it yet, I intend to finish it this weekend. I have noticed a couple of things that raise some concerns for me, and I'm hoping you all are reading them and finding some concerns that you have, and that we will see this on an agenda in the very near future. We're a little behind compared to prior years when this came out. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next, please. No one else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close our communication. And, let's see, council requests. No. Okay, yes, okay, introduction, number, item number six, introduction of ordinance number 1646, parentheses 18, amending Lompoc Municipal Code subdivision 9.36.090, permit commercial cannabis dispensary in the Old Town Commercial District. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At your last meeting, you requested that I bring to you an ordinance that allows cannabis dispensaries in the Old Town Commercial District. Remember, it doesn't allow, the Old Town Commercial District doesn't allow pharmacies, which is why dispensaries weren't allowed, and you wanted to change that. So on the agenda is an introduction of an ordinance that will do that. I'm going to put up a map to show you what that means, based on the buffer zones that So you all know where the Old Town District is, and because of the youth center uses that are within that area, it looks, it actually doesn't add a whole lot of area, even though the Old Town is included. There's just one little. Yeah. Right here is the one area in the Old Town District that is not within a buffer. The reason that the buffer, this area shown, originally, we didn't think that was going to have to need a buffer, but we were advised that there is another dance studio there that caters to youth, and so just as the other three dance centers are already on the buffer zones, we added that dance studio, which is why there's not a whole lot of Old Town area that is available for the dispensaries. And as you know, and I'm sure it's frustrating for the public, we changed this map more than once, because we get new information when we find out where there's another use. So I apologize for that, but I'm hoping we're there, but there may be some other uses that we're made aware of. When we went out and to find the dance studios, the reason that we put the dance studios at all is because I recall driving. at all is because I recall driving by one and said, "Ah, there's a dance studio we need to check." We checked online, and we found three. Then, after we had put the staff report together, we actually got a call from a real estate agent saying, "I think there's another dance studio." So that's how we ended up having the four, which took out most of the Old Town Commercial Area. So with that, what you're being asked tonight is to introduce the ordinance that will allow cannabis dispensaries in the Old Town District.
Okay. Councilor Starbuck.
Mr. Pinoni, just a question. Youth center and dance studio. What qualifies a dance studio as a youth center, I guess, is the question here? We did it with a gym. Are we reading too much into it, or are these legitimate? All of a sudden, you have a dance studio, so that must be a youth center?
But by the definition of what a youth center is in the Prop 64, if it primarily provides service for recreational or social activities for minors, then it's a youth center.
I mean, that could be Baskin and Robbins. I mean, where does, what are we using as the definition, though? You know, we have a...
We're using the definition from the...
Prop 64. But I guess the interpretation here is what I'm questioning is, so these are all just for little kids? These dance studios, we don't have any...
They primarily serve the youth.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Pinoni? Okay, thank you. We're going to open this up for public comment.
Good evening, Maryland Council members. My name is Rob Trailer. I'm a Lompoke resident. My comments this evening come with a request for increased transparency. As I mentioned previously, the municipal code online hasn't been updated in nearly three months, and based on my experience this afternoon, to obtain a copy of an unpublished ordinance, you have to make a public records request. Interestingly enough, the staff member that supplied the records request form told me that another person made a similar request not long before, so the demand for the information is predictable, to say the least. When I got back to my office, I found the following on the city's website. And I'm paraphrasing, "The mission of the city clerk's office is to provide exceptional service to the public by assuring vital records are easily accessible and disseminated with efficient and effective technology, and provide an environment where valuable and limited personnel resources are respected and ensure compliance with applicable state and local laws and regulations." In response, I'd say the internet is a pretty effective and efficient means of access and dissemination, and it can be used to free up valuable and limited personnel resources by proactively providing information that's the subject of repeated public records requests. And perhaps more importantly, considering the city intends to regulate the cannabis industry, and there are more than a few potential licensees, I'd say you'll find more compliance where laws and regulations are made readily available. And then on the issue of the ever-changing setback map, I think the city could increase transparency by indicating which entities are designated on the map behind each of the big blue bubbles, along with the rationale for the application of each setback. On the very first buffer map the city published, the setbacks were identified with orangish-yellow bubbles around small red boxes, and the parcels staff believe were implicated by the state's setback guidelines. And oddly enough, it included setbacks around home-based daycares. I shared my concerns with staff, and to their credit, the next map didn't have setbacks in residential zones. However, thereafter, the mapping process fundamentally changed. No longer was the parcel identified with a red box, rather just a big blue bubble. Like you saw on the map this evening, unfortunately, the change in methodology eroded transparency. And if I was cynical, I would say it's because someone doesn't like to be questioned. The current methodology makes it more difficult to determine which parcels are implicated by the setbacks, and more likely that setbacks won't be questioned. And to be clear, I don't expect perfection from the city staff any more than perfection should be expected from me. But as the map continues to include more and more setbacks, because to quote one city official, "We're not perfect," I'd also suggest there are those of us that can make colorable arguments as to how setbacks are inaccurately imposed. Generally speaking, I would encourage you to adopt the amendment that's before you this evening, as I believe it would foster economic development in Lompoke, in Old Town. But more strategically, I would encourage you to impress upon the staff the need to increase transparency wherever possible. It will only serve to improve the process in the city as a whole. Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Mitchell, I'm a resident of Grover Beach. I had some difficulty with the consent agenda regarding the zoning information. It seemed unclear as to the need to change the Old Town Commercial District from requiring a CUP to a UP. I know I walked in a few minutes late, so I do apologize. I may have missed this discussion about that. The majority of the council have supported the free market for the cannabis retail businesses. I remind and request reducing sensitive uses to schools and state-registered preschools. It is under the authority of you as the governing body of this city to determine what those sensitive uses are. As the retail businesses and the rest of the cannabis businesses all require that someone be 21 years of age with a valid ID to enter the building, I don't believe that it substantially increases a risk to dance studio nor a preschool. What is clear in both, I guess it's Malcurso now, and Prop 64, is that K-12 schools are something that, you know, are very rarely or shouldn't be changed within the sensitive uses. I also don't think that restaurants should be included as a primarily child-based activity, even if they have a bunch of video games or something like that. And I hope that all sensitive uses that have been identified have their requested use or conditional use permits as well. We're required to go through this, just as any business within your city limits are. And I find my last request is to keep the previously adopted map from November, one of the previously adopted maps from November through January, and not to adopt this new map. And I make that request with many of us who have, you know, really been scrambling for businesses to either, or properties to either purchase or lease, and these changes are, you know, kind of clouding the process, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Ron Vishal. I'm a resident of Lompoke Valley. I came up basically to talk about the new blue spots on the map. And when you add these dance studios to youth centers, actually, they're not. If you look at their hours, if you call them during the day, nobody picks up the phone. Here's one of their schedules here. Open 4:30 to 7:00, Saturday's 10:00 to 2:00. Here's one that's down right behind the Wicked Shamrock. Opens at 5:00. They do Zuba from 5:00 to 6:00, cardio, cardio hip-hop, 6:00 to 7:00. 7:00 to 8:00 was general fresh rehearsal, and 8:00 to 9:00 is salsa. So they cater to the older crowd. This as much as a youth center is Walmart. So you're, you know, you'd have to say, "Well, we got a big blue zone down by Walmart as well." One of these is, actually shares a wall with a winery. So you've got the same situation there. I mean, the children, if they're children that are 100% in these things, I could agree that they might be considered youth centers, but their hours are real limited compared to what you would see during a normal business day. The other item that I wanted to comment on was, seems like with the, it would seem to be better served of the citizens to have these in areas that they weren't just directly across the street from everybody or each other because they were all centered in one area because of the new blue zones. So I agree with Todd that I would suggest the city adopts one of the older maps that seem to be more reasonable than just trying to create new youth zones. That was basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Mark Oshamala, mayor, council members. So yes, it's been a long process. We've finally gotten here, and again, another map and more blue dots. Yeah, these blue dots are definitely affecting us as we are trying to establish a permit, you know, trying to get leases or buy or purchase a building. We're in escrow, and then we're out of escrow. We're going back and forth. We're hoping that you figure out and adopt a map that we can all work with. One of the points I'm trying to make is that we're absolutely concerned about the children. It's my major first concern, and I would never want a child to be exposed to this, but there are dots on the map that are basically not complying with city rules. They are not up to code, and children are involved in this. And if the concern is for the safety of the children, then why are we letting this continue? Where they're in a building that's unsafe for them. Fire happens, and these children are hurt, we as a city are responsible and liable because we've now acknowledged it's going on. So I would hope that the city goes back, reviews the dots, and as Rob said, they let us know what the dots are on, so we can actually, as a community member, look it up and say, "Hey, yeah, that's legit." But then, so the city goes back and studies the dots and makes sure that they're all legitimate, and they're up to code, because if they're not up to code, they shouldn't be there, and that's putting those children at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council, citizens of Lompoke. I wanted to start off by reading the definition of what a youth center is according to the Health and Safety Code, which Proposition 64 uses as its definition. And that states that a youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors, including but not limited to private youth membership organizations or clubs, social service teenage club facilities, video arcades, or similar amusement park facilities. I know that this definition kind of is even loose onto what you can define what a youth center is. But I think at some point in time, we have to decide what is been created as a business designed specifically for the youth, and what is open, say, like a church, which is open to everybody which comes, adults and youth. The dance facility which the city attorney is referring to, I visited this afternoon, and I happened to speak to someone in there, and they said that it caters to both adults and juveniles. So how are we going to define something as a youth center if adults also use that facility? At what point do we decide that an intermixing of adults and juveniles becomes a youth center? How many more areas in the city are you now going to have to define? You're now coming into an area where, like churches, where if you have to define something, you're going to come into an area that could leave the city open to potential lawsuits based on the reading into or defining of what a youth facility is. I also question, how many of these facilities, which are aligned in the blue bubble, have asked to be placed into that category? And how many have just been placed in randomly? How much input has been taken from those businesses? Have they come out and said, "Hey, we need to be included into this zone because of X, Y, and Z"? Or have they just been placed in there randomly so that we can continue to shrink down the cannabis industry's chances at success here in the city? Downtown Lompoke is not what it used to be, and I don't think it ever will be. But we have a chance to bring in industry, to bring in businesses to help revitalize who are willing to bring thousands of dollars of investments into the city. Please consider those businesses. Please consider those individuals who are here and trying to revitalize that area. Please consider them. Thank you.
Sorry, three times in one night, John Lynn Lompoke resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of an out-of-town property owner who has already signed a lease with a cannabis business because on the last map, their property was not in one of the many bubbles that's on this map. And I share the concern of, I think, everyone that's spoken. You need to get a list from the city staff of each and every one of the properties that is causing a blue bubble. You need to have a discussion among yourselves, with the public, obviously, about whether those are appropriate. I think in the case of the downtown dance studio, you would find that there are probably 75% older folks, non-minors, and 25% minors, having been to some of their events. I can't speak for the other dance studios. It is an interesting question of whether they ask to be included. There's probably a possibility that some people could, who are in some of these businesses, could ultimately lose their leases as a shopping center concludes that there are other uses that are better for them. And I think probably the biggest problem is that it keeps changing, and people are making very substantial financial decisions on shifting sand. And I know every one of you up here is in business, has been in business, or understands business, and you would not want to have to make your decisions based on that. So I hope you will not approve this map tonight. I hope you will approve the change to the zoning ordinance, and I hope you will bring back that information for that public discussion that several other people have asked for. I don't have a pony in the fight. I wouldn't have a marijuana business on any property I own, but I want to see everybody treated fairly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Let's see, comments? Someone like to entertain a motion? Councilman Mosby.
Is there any problem with putting a list of the markers, the addresses?
When we first did the first map, the gentleman is right that we had designated each of the uses that was in, causing one of the buffers. But then, as we thought about it, because of the kinds of uses, daycare centers and schools, we actually decided that it's probably not a good idea to advertise where all those are. So we took out what they actually were, identifying what they were. With regard to the dance studio, the dance studio that was added tonight, the reason that the dance studio even became an issue is because you decided you wanted to allow it in the OTC district. So when we looked at the OCT district, we saw there were some dance studios. We investigated the dance studios, and our conclusion was it meets the definition of the youth center. You, as a council, if you want, could interpret that dance studios are not going to be considered youth centers for the city of Lompoke, and we'll just redo the map, and you'll, what you'll see is several more purple areas because the OTC is the purple area, and there's a couple of buffer zones that would go away. But before we have that discussion, if you want to have that discussion, unfortunately, Councilmember Starbuck is going to have to leave the dais because then his property could potentially have, a cannabis use could be permitted in that property. So he would need to recuse himself from whether or not to include dance studios in the definition of youth center. With regard to, there was a question that was asked, and I don't remember what it was now. I'm sorry.
In, you know, before I did something like that, I'd want to investigate a little bit with the dance studios. I know several of them are primarily, a majority of them are used by youth, and I don't have any problem with that, but one or two of them I'm not really familiar with. So, I mean, that's...
What we did is we went online and saw how they were advertising, and it looked to us primarily that it was youth, a youth facility.
Youth-oriented, etc., yeah, because I think what it said is majority of the used by youth, I think, is what 64 recognized.
Primary. The word is primary.
Primary. Okay. All right. And that's something that could be brought back if we saw something, because this map can change over time if somebody goes out of business.
You're not adopting this map. This is map for information. As we've explained, every time the map has come up, as we get new information, we change things.
Correct.
Because that's the nature of the beast. There may be, actually, I won't be surprised if, when we start getting applications... There may be, actually, I won't be surprised if, when we start getting applications, that we may find some other use that's near this that we weren't thinking of until we actually saw the application. So I understand the frustration that causes, but that's where we are.
Right. And that's one of the things to understand, that this map changes. I think it's important, it's been a difficult target. I'm aware, I mean, I found one that I wasn't thinking about as well in industrial areas. So there are things, you turn a corner, you go, hey, what about that one? So I hear you, I know it's a level of complexity. And maybe if, maybe it was a case of people who had ownership of these facilities, have you had letters from any of them saying, I am or I am not?
That was actually one of the questions that I forgot that I wanted to answer. No business has contacted me or the city saying, can we be in a buffer zone? The only entity that had that contact was the church because they have a facility, it's not the entire church. The connection building is a youth building, basically. If not 90, 80, at least 80% of the time, it's being used for youth purposes, recreation and social activities. That's why that was added. No other business has asked us to be, asked the city to add them to a buffer zone.
If somebody contacted you from one of those businesses, said, hey, I'm not, would that be, or would it need more interpretation than if a business said, hey, I'm not primarily a youth facility?
If we got something in writing from a business saying, I'm not primarily a youth facility, then I don't see how the city could then call it a youth center.
Right.
I remember the other, there was also a comment about a retail place, a restaurant. The reason that, I forget which pizzeria, it's a pizzeria that has 10 video games. One of the, the way that the code defines youth center includes video arcades, and then when you look at the definition of video arcade, it has at least 10 machines and that restaurant has 10 machines. So that's why that was added.
Yeah, it has to have 10 or more, they say, yeah, exactly. So it's not like you're just arbitrarily, I mean, there's a lot, large layer of investigation you've been going through. But again, maybe if there is more, if the, some of these people contacted you and said they were or weren't, it could change the map even more.
If we're talking about youth centers.
Right.
Schools, no. Daycare centers, no. We, another question was asked, we actually, the way we determined where certain places were, we talked to the city clerk, got business tax certificates, we talked to planning and got special use permits, CUP records to see whether or not there was daycare centers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Mr. Penone, do we have a basis for any other city that's excluded youths as youth centers? The dance studios, are we using another city's format or is this just our interpretation of Proposition 64 to exclude them at this time?
I have not viewed any other cities.
Okay, so we don't know that other cities have excluded them?
Whether they include youth centers or not as a youth centers, no, I don't know.
I guess my question here is, you know, based on a full-time business...
Could I just interrupt a second? If we're going to continue to discuss the possibility of youth centers being dance centers, I apologize, but councilmember Starbuck, you should leave. So if the council still wants to talk about that, then councilmember Starbuck needs to leave.
I still have a couple of questions on that, sir. I also, you know, I'm concerned with families and children. My issue is with businesses that are deemed part-time. Unless we know for a fact that these dance studios are there full-time with dance lessons all day long, most of the ones that I know of have limited hours and they're more of part-time dance lessons, which are a mixture of adults. These aren't just kids in there by themselves, they're led by adults and they have a mixture of parents all the time with them. So my issue would be a full-time business versus a part-time, how would you deem them as a youth center? You've already left the question open that we could actually, as a council by majority, exclude that, but the limitations are pretty clear that most of them are in the evening or when people aren't working, Joe. So that's one of my considerations to say, how do we deem that as a youth center? Or do the youth centers, are they deemed youth centers whether or not they're part-time or full-time?
The definition of youth center is a facility, public or private, that primarily serves youth recreational or social activities.
I've got you. And you know, my issue is with looking at the map is we basically, H Street is completely off the grid with everything that's been happening here. And then you mentioned that there's a real estate agent that called and said, hey, we have another dance studio here. And it does make me wonder whether they're part of a church that was against the referendum or not. I know it's a non-issue, but I wanted to make that comment. The people that we're taking advice from are people that are calling in.
We weren't taking advice from anyone. We were told it was a dance studio. We went out and checked to see if there really was a dance studio. We did the same analysis with that dance studio that we did with the other three that we found ourselves and they seemed the same. But again, you as a council can say, dance studios don't follow, you are not interpreting youth centers to include dance studios.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, can we call councilmember Starbuck back? Okay, so based on what we've heard, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Osborne.
I move to accept the introduction of ordinance 164618, amending Lompoc Municipal Code, subdivision 9.36.09A, to permit commercial cannabis, cattisements, reasonable town commercial district.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Do you have a question?
Nothing's changed here with the ordinance?
No, nothing has changed. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 4-1. Okay, thank you. Okay, written communications.
Nothing.
No, okay. Oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us, two minutes.
Rob Trailer, Lompoc resident, I typically don't get up here with unprepared remarks. However, I think you're missing an opportunity, and maybe this, the previous agenda item wasn't the opportunity to take it, but by not having a very specific conversation about what you do and don't consider as youth centers, because my interpretation and the next person's interpretation could be totally different. And, you know, somebody threw around the term thousands of dollars. That's wrong. It's millions of dollars. There are people making million-dollar decisions on investing in Lompoc, trying to economically develop Lompoc. And what are we doing? We're fiddling around with blue bubbles on a map. It's an opportunity missed if you don't solidify the ground on which these people intend to operate. Thank you.
Next, please.
Todd Mitchell, Grover Beach. And I had just forgotten earlier to talk about, if this process is to open in the next coming weeks, some of the things the city needs to do, including getting their routing number for live scan and such, probably won't come in a timely manner. So if the council can consider in the future talking about a, some kind of temporary licensing, pending the background checks and things like that, that may help with the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to take a brief opportunity to introduce you to something that's been recently discussed regarding economic development. It came out of the last Congress and Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 217 and it's called an opportunity zone. An opportunity zone is a zone in which areas that have been deemed by census tract to be of lower income or of lesser income areas are going to have an opportunity to have special tax treatment by corporations or individuals that have substantial capital gains. So it's going to be similar to like a tax credit, but on a federal basis, in which these opportunity zones will be designated by our state government. And then we will be able to have a special fund and investors will be able to come in and invest money and have special tax treatment. It's being touted as potentially a big item. I've looked at the census tracts and probably three-quarters of Lompoc is eligible, but the big one is the Bailey Corridor. Because it's a continuous census tract to the area that is eligible, it is also eligible. And so is a potential of having a company, say SpaceX, be able to invest tons of money that they otherwise would be having to pay substantial taxes, federal taxes on, in the area. But it, in summary, the big item it says is the fund, the purpose of the fund is to fund new and small business, develop blighted properties, invest in key local infrastructure projects, finance facility construction or refurbishment. So it has some links. It's something it's worth taking a look at and it's right in line with economic development.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Dwayne Homdahl, live here in the city of Lompoc. My question has nothing to do with what you guys have been talking about, but similar. One is that my understanding is that you're not going to go ahead and tax cannabis because it's not something that you want to tax. You don't want to take it to the public and like to make that decision. You want to make it as a council, a decision, not allowing tax on that. I know it has me on the November ballot, but other cities are doing the same thing, except for Lompoc. Now, tonight we had the Recreation Department, other departments here, they're running short of staff. They had two, down to four. You've got a police department, don't have enough people, and a fire department. But you're not going to go ahead and put a tax on it. So you may want to take a look at how Santa Barbara's handling theirs and others are handling theirs, but they are taxing on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and just for the record, we as a council have not decided yet about the taxes on, at the March, I believe March 6th meeting is when we'll be discussing adding a tax to cannabis, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I just remembered some other comment that was made regarding the website and the availability of the municipal code. We actually have the, our codifier bringing the code up to date every three months, so quarterly. But it just so happens that, and if there hadn't been a referendum which suspended the marijuana, the cannabis ordinance, that would have been in last year's last batch. But because it wasn't effective until the beginning of this year, it won't be part of the next batch until the first quarter of this year.
I think I understand what you just said.
It won't be available online till that third quarter.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, the code change won't be, but the ordinance itself is online with every, yeah.
Correct. Okay, no one else? We're closing oral communication and bringing it back to the council. Council requests comments and meeting reports. We'll start with councilmember Vega.
After listening to Mr. Trailer there, it's a missed opportunity with the last ordinance we voted on. So if I bring this back up as far as the youth center, Joe, does that mean that councilman Starbuck has to be excluded from this conversation if I make some sort of a request? Maybe a little belated, but I would like a little clarification on youth centers and see where we're going with this, instead of letting it go by without...
Yes, I would suggest that councilmember Starbuck leaves the dais again if you want to have the discussion on whether or not you want to bring before you the issue of youth center.
Okay, and I would like to bring that issue up, if I could.
So the issue before you, because councilmember Vega asked, are there two other people who want to have brought back before you a discussion of what you want to include in youth centers and whether or not you want to include dance centers and youth centers?
I'll support the discussion. I still think it's in our best interest to do the broadest, but I would love a discussion of it so that we can explore if that is the best choice. So I'll support it.
Yes, thank you. And we need one more.
I'll support it.
Okay.
And you want that brought back at?
Next council meeting, can we do that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Laura, could you go get, all right, someone, okay, thanks. I think he's up front.
One other question. I'd like to, for the fee schedule for park and recreation, it seems to me with the improvement that we're doing to Thompson Park and the other parks, maybe city staff can come back to us and say about the transparency for fee schedules and people just driving by and wanting to know what a fee is going to be on a park. Do we have that simplified and clarified, what we would charge to have a barbecue at a certain area within the city? It seems to me as we improve our parks, there's going to be more need and want, or do you have to look on a website to find out what we're going to charge for a certain area within the city? Just a question here.
Yeah, that is available. The fees for renting areas of the park is available online and it depends on which areas you want to use. The parks are usually broken out and whether they're gazebos or barbecue pits or the different areas.
Is that information available at these parks? I mean, is there a phone number out there at all or an online address, you know, in these park areas for someone maybe that doesn't come through here or that drives through there, you know, is information-wise? I'm just wondering if we can do just a little bit better job of an outreach of information to try and get these things rented without running around searching?
Sure, no, it is available online and actually, we have been, the public information officer has done a community marketing outreach for rental of different facilities. And we've been doing the recreation facilities and next, I believe, there's discussion about doing promotion of the parks as well for rentals. So there's more we can do there.
Is that something that I should bring to the, or make a comment to the Park and Recs Commission also? Is that something that we can do also to bring that up as an agenda item?
We can certainly give them an update of what we're doing to get the word out about the rental of the facilities, absolutely.
Thank you.
I've been doing a little analysis about some of the vehicles that we need, one with PD. We're probably going to need something to get us in the riverbed for such. And I noticed that there's potentially FEMA grants available for equipment that we could use down there. I have been doing some research on a new fire truck. There are grant opportunities out there. It looks like the window's been closed with FEMA. We missed the filing period. There potentially is one with APCD. But I'm just wondering if there's a way somebody in staff could take the lead, because it seems like, you know, fires, maybe looking into it, maybe economic development, maybe, you know, is there somebody that we could designate as a lead? You know, there's two important pieces of equipment we need. One's potentially a fire truck and one's potentially some equipment for PD, so...
So we do have staff identified in those departments and Battalion, Captain Bray has been the staff person that's been keeping an eye on the grants. We were using a consultant in the past, but in the last budget cycle, we went ahead and brought that back in-house. So we have shared some of the information with the fire chief in regard to the grants you're bringing up, so that is on their radar to keep an eye out. And I don't know, Chief, if you have, you know, more information... And I don't know, Chief, if you have, you know, more information on the staff person that is doing that, but we do, we have in the past, and I know that.
And I understand in the past we had that, but again, Santa Maria got a million-dollar grant for a ladder truck, and we had an opportunity to file, we didn't even file. So we're, I believe we're missing out on some items. I know the fire truck is not, has to be done tomorrow and fixed tomorrow, but we need to get in line on this. We didn't, we didn't even fill out applications. So I'm just wondering, is there somebody else in admin that could be a lead to help coordinate with the other? Because I, we're not doing it. And I don't know if I need to make it as a council request or if you guys as well. I mean, we've had a transition with the fire chief, but we haven't been doing it. So I don't know, what we have in the past hasn't been working. So my question is, do I need to make it up there to find a lead or is it something?
Well, let us discuss this internally, because we have folks identified, and I don't know about the specific circumstances of which one we're talking about. But this has been something that has been on particularly fires' radar in the past, so.
Right, and I, I mean, I know when you're applying for grants, you have to keep your eyes on the maps in a lot of different directions. And I know fire, a lot of those guys are busy doing a lot of other things. I'm just, you know, we're missing out on maybe millions of dollars here, and I think we need to stay on top of it. So I'll wait till I hear back from you on that.
Okay, and just so everybody is aware, the consultants that we did have on retainer are available on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, that's a nominal, well, there's a fee involved in that, but if you're getting millions of dollars in grants, then it's worth the investment and that would pay off. So something to consider as well.
Okay. The other thing is, in my spare time, I sat down and read the River Bend EIR, 281 pages of it. And in going through the River Bend EIR, there's always been kind of a confusion of the lights. Why aren't there lights in River Bend? And there's been comments, well, you can't do it and this and that. As I find in this study, there's some statements that were made in there, it was primarily because of potential light pollution was one of the big arguments. It was also an argument with the floodway and the flood plain being down there. And I know they can design bridge pedestals for water to go around, so I believe we can try to work with, to at least analyze it, because we didn't really get to that level of analysis in the EIR for lights. Never went above much more than just stating we can't do it because there's potential light pollution. With the new LED lights, LED lights, as we know, are more directional, and they don't have and emit as much light pollution as the Redger HPSs and incandescents and stuff. So I would like to make a council request to have initial investigation, to go into potential investigation of doing a light study on River Bend Recreation Fields. I know those fields are some of the most used fields in the valley, and now that 60% of the people who have jobs commute for those jobs, we really need to start looking to have some of these fields open later. So again, I'm asking not for a bunch of money to be spent, but to do the initial investigation to move forward, to be looking at a light study at River Bend Recreation Fields.
Could we go ahead and use the EIR, the information that's already in this, about lights?
There wasn't a light study in the EIR. There was, the comments were pretty light about it. There's a couple of pages in there.
How do the gophers feel about lights?
Yeah.
I'd give you a second on it. I think it's worth looking at specifically, yes.
Okay.
I'll give you a third on that. It's worth looking at for nighttime activities for the kids.
And the big kids. The other thing, I know we've discussed this in the past, and it's kind of just been glossed over. And those of us who've been here for a little bit of time have had opportunities to use the old McLaughlin Crossing. And I know there's a potential, you put it in, it washes out, and that's why they put in the low-water bridge crossings, that they do. They've done it out of Santa Maria Black School Road, did it for a number of years. I know we've talked about it over the last three or four years, of potentially looking at investigating. It's in the county. I've had some preliminary discussions with our county supervisor, and I think if the city council would move forward with a letter requesting for them to look in and investigate about getting grant funding to put the McLaughlin Crossing back in, it could potentially alleviate the impactions of the level of service on Central Avenue and H Street, our most impacted area. I did find an old traffic analysis from the early 70s, and you're looking at 4,000 to 5,000 vehicles a day used to travel that way. And I know it opens up an opportunity for people to come in and out, and just asking for a simple letter to go to the supervisor of the fourth district to ask them to investigate and move forward with, trying to help us find some, help them find some grant funds to put that in. The easement, I believe, is still there, which is important. So I don't know if I could get two other people to come along with that.
Councilman Mosby, that's, just to have the record, to meet the Brown Act, it's to ask whether or not to place on the council agenda that discussion.
Well, would you have to go that far? Could I do it here? Okay, council agenda discussed, to put a letter to them, so, okay.
Obviously, this is something that I'm going to go ahead and second. I tried several times in the past to bring this up. It was a very heavily-used, you know, route between Mission Hills and Lompoc. It's always been washed out. It was a retainer for water there, right on our aquifers. The, we didn't need to asphalt it, we just roadbase it. I mean, no, absolutely, it's still on the county's general plan that shows it. So I mean, I would love to bring this up for discussion again.
Is there any cost to staff impact, except for writing a letter if this was to move forward?
Well, we'd have to bring it back for discussion first, and then, I don't see so, no.
Okay, I got you. I'll give you a third on that.
And another thing, in going through the audit report, and it appears to me that $750,000 loan that we borrowed for the swimming pool was used in the previous fiscal years to balance the numbers. And again, appears to me, I'm looking forward to coming out and having discussion of this, the annual audit report to come back, but that number was also used to balance the budget this time. So my, it appears to me the number's been used twice. So if that is the case, we do have an issue with our budget, and we need to look at it sooner than later. But I did find it in here as a marker on page 130, it's in here, and we did bring it back again as late as August, that number again. So just something for discussion to make sure that when we come back, that that's an item of real concern that I have. The other thing is, let's see, I did attend the SB CAG subregional meeting representing the city, as well as the SB CAG regular meeting last week, and that's it.
Councilman Starbuck.
No reports, but I'd like to bring something up for the public's attention. I'm going to read just a very short little paragraph. On April 15, 2014, city council adopted the subrecipient financial programmatic and monitoring report requirement policy. This has been around for several years. The policy required an annual compliance report to be presented to the city council at a public meeting, at least annually, by the Economic and Community Development Department staff at the second meeting in July each year or soon thereafter. In addition, staff is required to provide city council with a written status report on subrecipient compliance mid-year for the periods of January 1 through June 30 and July 1 through December 31 of each calendar year. Attached is the subrecipient compliance status report for the period of July 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017. The council did receive a transmittal dated January 31 on the monitoring of money that we loaned out. It is now available on the website, so I didn't want anybody in the public to think that we're not taking care of our old contracts, so we are.
Councilman Roseborn.
I attended the Human Services Commission's committee meeting this month, the Parks and Recs Committee meeting. I also met with United Way and Home for Good Transition, and attended the League of California Cities Calpers presentation last week. And I'd like to remind the community that Restaurant Week is going on this week. Check out all the different restaurants. It's an opportunity to try out a restaurant you've never visited before. Most of them have a menu based on $20.18. So it's on the Chamber website, so take a look at that, and please participate.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, numerous being, just a couple that I want to bring to your attention. On the 12th, I attended the teen conference at the Dick Dewey Center. Again, it's an annual conference that, I think it's juniors from local high schools attend, and as we all know, we've got a fantastic group of young individuals here in this community. And there was probably, I'm going to estimate, 75 individuals there, and they're all there to get together, three different high schools. Actually, there's, I believe, some kids from high schools out of town, getting together, just sharing their experiences and learning from different speakers. On the 16th, I also attended, as Councilman Roseborn did, the Mayor's and Managers Meeting and Solving, which we discussed the issue of PERS. And it was a very enlightening presentation about what all cities, not just the city of Lompoc, are what we're faced with, with the issue of the PERS retirement plans. Then I do have one council request. Each of us council members, along with some city staff, we received a citizen's complaint about conduct of the city council. And this is not new, we've heard these before. So in looking at it, we do not have in our council handbook a policy on code of conduct for the council members. So I'd like to make a council request that we direct staff to look at the, it's the League of California's policy, they have it written out, we can maybe modify it a little bit to address us, but to add this to our council handbook, which would be a city policy addressing code of conduct for council members. And I'm looking for a second and a third on that. Okay. Okay, do I have a second and a third?
I'll give you a second on that.
Okay, do we have a third? Okay, without a third, that fails. Okay, and with that, we are adjourned to a regular city council meeting on March 6 at 6:30 PM here in the city council. Thank you very much.